Wednesday, the first at the City Hall complex. So I called this session to order and we have about three presentations today under communications. We'll go to the first one. A proposed Techea Park improvements in design. Mr. Andre.
I'll just introduce this real quick, Mr. Mayor, if that's all right. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to introduce this project on behalf of Andre Ryu. Dr. Felix and Marcel Bachelier and I have all been working together per your recommendations in the strategic plan to look for parks and recreation opportunities in the city of Nogales. Techea Park was identified as one of those opportunities with a potential donor of the land towards the back half. We collaborated with University of Arizona and Andre Ryu is a recent graduate of the Masters of Landscape Architecture program there. And it's great to have him down here. We've been working with him for the last couple of months. He's really given us some great concepts and he's here to present a final concept that he's drilled down and kind of really finalized. We think that it's very great and ultimately we thought it kept in, was in keeping with your guys' strategic plan goal. And we think it promotes Nogales as a place for imagination and creativity and ultimately fitness opportunities and things like that that will get back to the community. So that said, I'll hand it over to Andre.
Hi, I'm Andre.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon. I'd like to start by saying it's really great to be able to present before the council and the mayor today. It's been a great project. I've worked closely with Dr. Felix, Frank Dillon, and another intern, Isaac Palomo, who's from the city of Nogales. It's been a good project to work on. So getting into things today, you know, I want to show you the design that's been generated over the past couple of months, but I'd like to start with some of the legwork. You've been given a pamphlet and some scale drawings. Pamphlet is, or the booklet, rather, is sort of a truncated version of this presentation. So you can follow along with this presentation or review it at your own time more in depth as you please. So the first thing that I'd like to show you is just a map outlined in color. On this map is the general bounds that were given for Techea Park and possible expansion into that space. You can see the major roads that are adjacent to it. There's two prominent neighborhoods directly next to the site. One of them is partially closed off due to the topography of the site being behind south of the hill and the other side very much in touch with the park. At a more intimate scale, site scale, there are some issues that are visible in terms of the enclosure of the park. So this park is actually, it's behind City Hall and the only place that you can see it from Grand Avenue is as you approach the intersection where the Chevron is. And then aside from that, it's enclosed by the neighborhood and the hills. One prominent feature that sticks out on the site is there's stand-up sycamore trees that are in extremely good health and they seem like an excellent park feature that should be built upon. So I selected this image in particular because through some research on social media, it became evident that one of the larger user groups of the park are parents of disabled children. This is a group called SANS, which is the Southern Arizona Network for Down Syndrome. And there are several organizations similar to SANS which have annual events that meet at this park and it seems like a user group that should be accommodated and looked into. So that was sort of a guiding principle when developing a program for this park. So this is a diagram that sort of highlights the three main ideas that I felt needed to be addressed, which are accessibility, community, and resilience, where each of these things overlap, you have certain outcomes. So where accessibility and community come together, you have inclusion, where community and resilient materials are brought together, you have stewardship of the park. Where all three are brought together, you have increased usage, which is the end goal for the park. So when you're writing a program, those are broken up into goals, which are your desired outcomes, objectives, which are how you achieve your goals, and the qualities and elements of each of those. So each of these pieces represent a different goal and each of these goals have three sub-objectives. And those objectives have been outlined with elements and qualities. The reason that I show you this is because this provides a really easy framework for creating a design for the park, which lets us put pencil to paper, or trace, as the case is. And I'll go through these briefly just because of the time constraints, but some of the early concepts involved making accommodations for youth soccer and a pedestrian bike way which ran through the park that had multipurpose. A more truncated view of not expanding the park, but making the best of the amenities that are there, expanding on the natural area, and reducing the overall turf. But ultimately, the concept that was met with the most enthusiasm basically revolved around the idea of implementing a fitness loop, a track, a quarter-mile track on Techea Park, where you have different activities that exist inside of that loop and on the exterior. So this was developed, you know, over the course of eight weeks into something a lot more than just these bubbles here. And so we'll sort of get into that. So we'll address this from left to right. One of the things that's on the table for this is the possibility of donation of land to the city. And part of that is the inclusion of a new amphitheater. And so on the far left, you can see item number one, that is the new amphitheater. It's nested into the hillside and it's accommodated by additional parking and another 25 spaces that make use of a split level and a one-way lot. Item number two are improvements to the basketball court. Currently, the volleyball court is dilapidated and in disuse. This moves the court over and nestles it inside of the fitness loop and adjoins it with two grass viewing lawns directly beneath that. Item number three, there is a nature walk which goes through the hills. And so this nature walk, a lot of time is spent making sure that the grades of the paths would be acceptable for use. And it's connected in five places in total, so three into the site and two exterior to the site, bringing the connection from outside of the hillside. Item number four, if you're following along, is that's a ramada. And so there are five shade structures on site that accommodate various numbers of tables. The one down there in the bottom accommodates the most at nine tables. And then we also have two in four and one ramada, which is completely open so that there are no tables underneath that allows people to bring what they want to that location. You know, you could have a dance underneath that, you could set up booths for special events, all sorts of things like that. Item number five is a small footbridge. And so item number five moves directly through that stand of sycamore trees that stand in the park. And that footbridge goes over a series of detention basins which are intended to capture runoff from the hill. Because this does sit in a floodplain, slow that water down and let it percolate and improve the health of the trees. Item number six refers to the quarter-mile running track. It's two lanes. It's ideally out of rubberized asphalt like you'd see on a high school track. It's about eight feet wide, which accommodates most service vehicles. And along each, you'll see these small purple circles outside the edge. And those purple circles are fitness stations where people can engage in different exercises like sit-ups or pull-ups along that area. Number seven is the Great Lawn. It's a sunken lawn. You can see the slopes that are implied by the shading and some small contours with one side being steeper than the other and a much gradual, much more gradual slope from the entrance of the park. And number eight nestled in between the original walkway that exists in the park, the only sidewalk that exists in the park, and the rest of the track is a handicap-accessible play area on top of rubberized materials with partially shaded by the existing trees there and partially shaded by a proposed shade structure. If we move on, unfortunately, these aren't labeled, but if we go from top to bottom, it's A, B, and C with A and A' left to right, if you're looking at the site key. You can see that the amphitheater is nestled into the hillside. And then you can also see the split division between the two levels of the proposed parking area with a detention basin in between the two and an entry into the park. In section B, you can see where it cuts across the entirety of the smaller circle on the site, moving through the track. The viewing lawn faces into the basketball court. The continuation of the track on the other side, another fit station, the footbridge that brings people up a little bit into the tree canopy and over the detention basins, followed by another fit station and the rest of the track. Finally, section C, which runs from the northwest to the southeast side of the main bowl. You see the track at the far end, the steeper side of the slope. We only go down about three feet there, so you can see that people are still above like knee level where their eye line is at. And then a much more gradual slope from the playground and the sidewalk. So you can see the original sidewalk there going into the handicap-accessible playground. And then to deal with the hillside slope, there's a small detail in there where it's a retaining wall and a seating wall that faces into the playground. Just to show you some of the materials and the color scheme of the palette, the color scheme is not just for the presentation. I feel that these colors could be applied in the park for a very vibrant contemporary look. Some of the materials that we'd look at are the pathways would include rubberized track like previously discussed, stabilized decomposed granite for the nature walk and concrete sidewalk everywhere else where possible. Ground covers would be a limited amount of turf. And this image is key here because I want to discuss the idea of when you create an edge for turf, you increase its value. So when turf is confined to smaller spaces, people take better care of it and it's more attractive and it's something that people arrive to instead of a blanket coverage and a waste of resources. The basins would be rock mulched and the play surfaces would be the typical rubberized play surfaces that you see near playgrounds. Gathering spaces range anywhere from intimate seating areas like a concrete picnic bench to the shade structures that are proposed. And you'll see that in some of the perspectives, there are different visualizations for what the larger shade structures could be. They could be simple rustic park shade structures where you have like a wooden ramada, or they could be something more contemporary along these lines. The specialty equipment, you can see that the fitness station is really simple. Really, it's a little bit of metalwork to allow people to do specialized exercises. And I also wanted to emphasize that just because handicap, just because play equipment is handicap accessible doesn't mean that it's lesser play equipment. You can see that that looks like a fully equipped jungle gym, but it's accessible to a broader audience. And finally, the amphitheater that I proposed is pulled from a project which has a similar amphitheater where it's four levels of grass that faces stage enclosed by a retaining wall. That's in Philadelphia, but it is appropriate here. So on plant materials, I wanted to go back to that idea of edge. So you may have seen in the plan view that there are a lot of naturally vegetated areas. And something that I'd like to emphasize is that when you create edge, you create a sense of containment. This is a picture of a yard in Tucson. It's the yard of Brad Lancaster, who's sort of a water harvesting guru in Tucson. And so he has this really wonderful wild-looking landscape that feels contained and maintained. This graphic on the right was made by intern Isaac Palomo and he did some great work that really, we pulled from a lot of different natural vegetation that would be successful here in Nogales at different levels of watering needs and at different levels of use. So I actually took Isaac out and I got him trained on a drone. So we got some drone photography and now he can do that. He's completing the same program that I just finished in May, so now he'll be able to apply this to his studies. And so this is visualization of how that looks over the existing space. You can see the parking lot for City Hall over there. You can see, you know, a ton of new trees. We're looking at the Great Lawn. The fitness track is a very strong edge to contain that grass. And we have the consolidated play area, which is more broadly accessible, not only because of the equipment, but because of its proximity to the parking lot. So this would be directly opposite. You can see there's another site key down in the bottom right. Top right of the screen is the art gallery that sits atop the hill that looks over the park. And you can see the basketball court and dilapidated volleyball court. And now you can see sort of how that amphitheater fits nestled into the hill. It's really working with the topography there. And you can see that we have a split-level parking lot that again is working with the topography that exists. And the improvements to the basketball court with the viewing lawns, the track around it, you can see a couple of fitness stations, a bathroom to accommodate the increased use of the park because of the amphitheater, and another ramada. So these perspectives look from the three different entrances of the park. So here would be the entrance from City Hall. You can see the track, the sunken lawn, the drainage way out to its natural outlet. That's where it flows out of the parking lot currently. The new ramada. This is the, sorry, that's the northwestern entrance of the park. This is entrance from the neighborhood. That entrance is really just a two-foot gap in the fence with some shrubs, so we'd want to improve that. But you can see those improvements laid over the top of that. You can see the bollard lighting that would surround the track, keeping it illuminated, the playground in the background. And then the final entrance at the western end, looking at the currently defunct volleyball court. And then it's planting that with the relocated basketball court, fitness station there in the foreground, the bathroom in the background, the nature trail, and you can see where it goes up to the amphitheater. Isaac generated some more of these excellent diagrams that sort of extrapolate the different layers of the site. So we're looking at the different kinds of vegetation, the different areas where water is being collected on-site, slugged down and sunk into the ground, put to better use. And then over here, you can see circulation, the different intensities of, excuse me, the different intensities of ground cover, the vegetation, proposed lighting. This is a diagram that shows the, the topography is overlaid on the hillside. So in the cyan arrows on the hillside, you can see where water's shedding off. And then where each of those arrows is broken up, the dark blue ones, those would be areas that they would be collecting in different sections with the proposed design. And to sort of tie this all together, I've put together a phasing diagram. And the phasing is really simple on this. You would start with the stormwater treatments and additional vegetation. Then you would move on to the track, the site equipment like ramadas, lighting poles, most of the paved surfaces. And then cap it off with the improvements to the 200-seat amphitheater, the parking lot, and the nature trail system. So, you know, this is a design proposal. It's open for comment and revision. You know, I'd like to open it up for questions, but before I do that, I'd just like to say I've been very fortunate in working on this project and I hope that I can continue to in some way. Thank you.
Well, yes.
Thank you. For that theater, I don't know if I heard you or if you mentioned, how much are we talking about accommodating? How many people are?
So the request was to accommodate somewhere between 150 to 200 people.
Did you mention that in your presentation?
I mentioned it very briefly in closing. Yes. And so the dimensions on that amphitheater are based off of giving people a certain square footage because it's open seating on the lawn. And so it works out to like a 16 square foot per person inside of that area. So it's like a four-foot, a four-foot area.
What type of activities would you plan for that amount of?
Well, so something that I've heard that happens currently in park is that there's like movie night in the park. So that would be one small activity, but I think the idea would be that you'd be able to book events, gatherings, musicians. I'm not entirely, I haven't programmed entirely.
Did you do a background on the activities that have taken place in that park previously?
Well, I've looked into different organizations that meet at the park.
But any of the events that have taken place there and what the populations there are? Like, isn't there one, for example, Mayor, where they bring the law enforcement's here?
Well, that's, yes, we have the Night Out, which is around September. But aside from that, we do have, and this year I haven't seen it, but we normally in the summer, we have those free movies that I think Circles of Peace is involved in, if I'm not mistaken, Doctor.
But what's the population for that? I mean, if we're gonna put a, it would just seem to me that if you're gonna put an amphitheater there, you should have more or less an idea of the activities you're gonna have and what previous populations are of events. I mean, it looks real nice, but we don't want it just sitting there. And yes, there'd be some events that we can use it for, but we want, we want something that we're gonna put, that we're gonna put some money in there and that we've already had activities previously that we can say, we can do this and this is where we can have it.
Consulman Rojas, the intent was to have a plan, meet with the community and talk about their perceptions of what utilization could be. And then come back and make some adjustments as the community says, this is what we'd like to see as opposed to that. And one of the things that they wanted to see was these soccer fields, practices for little kids, soccer and T-ball. So this accommodates that and for small games like that. So we just still need to do the analysis and go to the community, especially that neighborhood, and talk about what would they want to see. And then the groups in town, what utilization.
So it's a plan you're kind of working with and getting some feedback and, you know, that's what I would like. I would like to have some numbers, some activities, activities that have been done in the past and maybe some activities that you foresee in the future so that we can accommodate the different organizations as well as the city.
Consulman Rojas will also meet with the school district to see how they might utilize the park as well.
Because if it's a good amphitheater that we can use there, then you can also apply it somewhere else with a bigger population.
So I was curious, I was curious about the seating of the amphitheater. Actually, if you could give a little more detail on that.
Yeah, actually, so I'd probably bring this back to... There we are. Let's see if I can zoom in here. So there we are. So what you're looking at is essentially it's open seating, like lawn seating. Each of the slopes of those is a very gradual slope that's acceptable for elevating people's viewership of the stage. And the sizing of that has been accommodated for the requested number between 100 and 200, 200 people. So people could be sitting out there with blankets. You know, if people wanted to bring out picnic chairs, you know, maybe if we'd ask them to sit at the back so they're not disturbing other views. What's that?
Or little cushions that they use during sporting events, you know.
Yeah.
And the reason I ask is, is on that actual seating, it would seat up to about 200 people?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Would there be any standing room to the sides or anything like that? Say it was a bigger event that say it exceeded the 200, say we have 300 people, would they still be able to?
So this particular amphitheater has been sized to accommodate a particular number. The size of the amphitheater, the design of the amphitheater, I think, would go back to what Dr. Felix was talking about, where if we were to go with something, we would want to know the size of the events that we were having and to accommodate accordingly. So this is a proposal at a particular number, but that number could be flexible and because of that, the design and the buildup of that would have to accommodate that.
It'd be kind of strange, I think, if it exceeded that number. Most of the events would be probably under that, a little under. But I was just thinking, in case we needed to do a bigger, something that might be of some overflow, would we be able to handle that there?
I think that if you did want to host an event that had overflow outside of that, that the, let's see here, the grass bowl here would be able to accommodate events like that. It already has a natural slope built into that. It's in a nice container being, you know, set inside of the track.
And we could put seats out there or chairs or something without messing up too much the lawn?
I'm sure that there is some amount of maintenance that would need to go with that, but it would be, it would be an accommodating use of it. And also, that's the point of grasses.
Like if we had a small concert or something, you know, that brings in, attracts people. I'm just, you know, like I said, I think, I think 200 will fill the needs, but just in case if there's overflow, it's good to know that there is something on the site there that people can make themselves comfortable in.
Oh, absolutely. Well, and in addition to that, there are ramadas that are scattered throughout. We have that one ramada that's open so that there's not tables underneath. And so, you know, you could have potentially different stations for an event set up around this track. It would be very flexible in that sense.
Well, I think, I think it's probably more than what we envisioned. It seems to be a well-designed, planned concept here, though, how to make, get multiple use of that amphitheater. I don't know, Consulman Diaz has thought of that in mind. Actually, we were kind of just hoping to have one, but it seems to be well-planned out.
So I got a couple of questions here. You know, thank you for doing this and coming down and putting your time and energy into this project. It's very nice. We've never had something like this in Nogales, so it's gonna be our prototype, it's gonna be our start. So, you know, I like the concept, I like the, just to have it, you know, that, so this would be our prototype. So on the amphitheater itself, you can accommodate 200 people, but would you leave areas for, like make it bigger for adding on to it later on if the need arises? I mean, we gotta start somewhere and this is a good start. So as the need arises, if it's a totally big success and, you know, you want to have a rock band there, you want to have the kids doing a Christmas concert, the Mexican consulate doing their the César de Gimp and all that, would you leave an area so it could be expanded without too much trouble, you know, like for future use?
If you look at the natural topography of the site, this is currently nestled in a little bit of canyon, but because it, that slope continues across, it'd be very feasible to look at redesigning maybe so that it's not that enclosed state, so that it was maybe something that was, you know, that could be extended out or extruded out into the landscape. It'd be very possible.
Consulman Diaz, one of the other concepts we have is instead of building a stage, we look at a portable stage that could be semi, that breaks down into a stage. It could fit into that every, you know, seven, and it could be wide open, but rather than build a stage with all the resumes that you have for electrical and all that, a portable stage could be moved, a pleasure field here.
So it's a good start, very good start, to do something for our residents and, you know, something for the kids and the community to look forward to, wanting to come over and having some fun.
Seems well-defined. Consulman Manzalado.
I saw one, there's one in San Diego where it's very similar, but on the walls are lower and they have the option of cement at different levels where they could put liters.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. I would add to the expandability of it. They could be, you know, removed from sight if necessary or, yeah.
And they had it like with the canopies and stuff like that, you know. So I think that'd be a good idea to give it the option of putting liters or stuff like that with a little, maybe a lower wall. It's a great project, great, thank you for taking time and doing this, Andre. It's a great project, great, thank you for taking time and doing this, Andre, you know, turning this thing into Disneyland. Thank you.
Thank you. Consulman Lucero?
Sorry for being late, but from what I saw, it looks great. Is there any possible way you can come up with a general ballpark in terms of cost of what we'd be looking at for something like this, so at least we can start to get in our minds to prepare for trying to come up with the funds to do something like this?
So, at this point, I've been asked to really develop this design from the concept that there was like a pencil on trace up to that. I think it's possible for me to continue to work on that. It might be something that Frank or the people would look to, or possibly, yeah. At this moment, I couldn't give you a ballpark, is what I'm saying.
Just so you can get in order of magnitude, just so we, because we'll be going into the budget process here in early next year, and it'd be nice to know what to prepare for, or at least we can put something aside so we can start looking at trying to implement some of the stuff that you have there.
Consulman Lucero, one of the things we'll do is we're gonna cost it out by the three stages that he mentioned, and then decide which stage we go first, but we'll work on those figures. But first, we have to do the community survey to see what can be added, subtracted.
How receptive the neighbors are gonna be to it. Thank you.
Anyone else on the council that has a question?
Thank you, Mayor. I really enjoyed your goal number three, and my thing is for our community to learn as much as they can about having green, recyclable, things that can be reusable on that park. And I really enjoyed that goal three. On your objective number two, you made a comment there that says must show sponsorship for management by community. What does that mean?
So, that was an early objective that was put in. One of the things that was brought up a lot of, that probably should have been edited just a little bit, but we discussed the inclusion of a community garden into the park, and that was something that was present in all three concepts. The issue with community gardens is that they do require extensive sponsorship by the community in terms of, if you don't have somebody that's actively managing a community garden, they fall into disrepair. But the idea of having user buy-in, of having people that care about the park and that are using it daily, well, there's still an element of sponsorship in that. You know, when you have people that visit and frequent a site, there is care taken towards that site. Concerned citizens raise concerns if, you know, things aren't being taken care of, or they do something about it themselves. And so I guess that would be what it is, is buy-in, yep.
Also, this handicap, the sensibility, wonderful, because I don't think we really have a playground here that meets the needs of the special ed students, especially the profoundly special ed students. So I think, especially when you can get the special ed student to go ahead and be mingled in with the regular people, they feel, those students don't feel it, there's a set of playgrounds for them and another set for the other kids, and I think that's an excellent idea. On your rubberized track there, you said that it's eight feet wide?
Yes.
And enough room for vehicles?
A service vehicle, so you know...
Okay, a service vehicle, but we've done that with a service vehicle on the running track at the high school football field. And all it does is deteriorate that one quarter of a mile is just like one lap around the football field.
That's correct.
And we have those vehicles that get onto that track and they just, that track is probably gonna cost at least $300,000 or $400,000 rubberized, just the track itself. And putting vehicles on it diminishes the value of that.
Right. So, that would be something that would definitely need to be specked out differently, then? I'm glad that you brought up that concern. So, you know, I can edit these materials so that you don't include the rubberized material in plain asphalt.
Did you have an alternative? Did you have, were you prepared for an alternative?
An alternative material?
Yes.
So I would recommend plain asphalt in that case, if that's a concern, because asphalt holds up to regular wear and tear. You know, you can still paint that surface, painted asphalt is not an issue, you can keep the, you know, very bright color that you have here, yeah.
And it's not hard on the, to walk on or run on.
Yeah. And so, you know, that's actually a point that I should have brought up about, bringing this into accessibility. Having this loop, which goes around the entirety of the park, you know, when I've been, I've been on a couple of site visits out here really early in the morning, and what I see are, you've got, you know, a couple of groups of the hitos that are like out there and, you know...
Elder Navide hitos, elder.
Elder.
Lot of marxists around here.
But there, there's this couple that I watched where they've got that one strip of sidewalk, and all they are doing is they're walking back and forth on that single strip of sidewalk, because the rest of the park isn't, you know, on level surface. And so having that track makes the entirety of the park accessible to, you know, that portion of the population.
Andre, it's a great beginning, and it gives us some vision for it, and I thank the staff for bringing this vision in conjunction with our strategic plan, because we spend a lot of time on the strategic plan, and I'm glad that the three of you are bringing things that give from the direction of, this park would just enhance the quality of life in our community. You did a good job, Andre, and thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
No.
Andre, thank you so much.
Great job. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
So now we go into the, Vestamos, or Vestamos promotes positive change and self-sufficiency to enhance the quality of life for the benefit of those who we serve. Vestamos, a subsidiary of PPLC, Chigano Por la Casa, and I guess we have the first person up. Would you like to welcome Dr. Frank Bennett?
Mayor, I'd like to, Chigano Por la Casa was established in 1969 in Phoenix, and since then, they've grown to the largest nonprofit group in the country. Right now, they currently serve over 250,000 individuals annually from Arizona, Nevada, and New Mexico, and they provide a comprehensive range of bilingual, multicultural services focusing on health, human services, housing, education, and more importantly, economic development. So I'd like to introduce David Alame, who's the president of PPLC, and he'll take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to see you guys. I've seen some of you guys recently at different events, so it's nice to be here in Nogales. And I'm especially excited to be here, because just as a personal note, my wife is excited because she's actually from Nogales Anora. So she asks me every now and then, so what are you doing in Nogales? So you guys have somebody who's gonna keep the pressure on me and make sure that we're gonna start doing more in Nogales.
Good.
But I've been the CEO a little over two years now of Chigano Por la Casa, and something I'm very proud of, and thank you, Dr. Felix. Our numbers are actually, our last official number of people that we've actually impacted, as we like to say, is over 304,000 people, primarily in Arizona, but with the new states, Nevada, and New Mexico, that that number continues to grow. We believe the number at the end of this year, which ended 6/30, our fiscal year, will probably be in the 360,000 people that we serve. My board has put a big, I like to call it a hereditary goal on me, by the end of our seven-year plan, which we're in our third year of, that that number will be 1.5 million people that we serve. So, they keep us on our toes, you know, I'm the ex-banker, so I'm always talking about the numbers and how we're doing there, but then they say, well, why are you here? Why are we here? Why were we started? And that's to serve the people, and that's the thing that we're gonna focus on, we're gonna talk a little bit about that today. Before we get into that, I have our Southern Arizona President, Market President, which includes, Nogales is gonna come in, but we're gonna introduce the staff, and then from there, we'll get started on presentation, if you don't mind.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today with you all. There's been several conversations with many of the individuals here over time and at different events, and we're just really grateful to have your time, as I know you're very busy. That being said, we brought several of our team members, so I would like to create sort of a formal, excuse me, informal atmosphere within your formal atmosphere, if that makes any sense. For us, whiteboard sessions work very well, because it's brainstorming, and it's really sharing of information, learning of community needs, and that is what we do, and we do it well. And we're proud of that, we're not boasting, but we're really excited about possibilities with the city of Nogales. That being said, I'd like to go ahead and have our staff, each of our staff stand and introduce themselves, and just let you know the region and the area in which they work. Thank you.
I'll stand first, and is it okay if I just...
Is that okay?
Herman Reyes, I oversee all of the Chigano Por la Casa, which is very significant in the state of Arizona. We have about 3,000 units of multifamily and about 300,000 square feet of commercial space. We definitely have a lot of opportunity in Nogales that we could venture into, say, for sure.
You would help, though, if you use a microphone, because they're streaming it so the people know who you are, though, too.
So my name is Herman Reyes, I'm the Executive Vice President, I report to David Alame. I oversee our real estate operations, which is inclusive of multifamily, some single family now, and definitely some land. And we definitely have some land here in Nogales, which I would definitely have some suggestions for what we might wanna do there. But we have a very significant portfolio of multifamily, about 3,000 square feet, 3,000 units, some of which are here in Nogales, are Mountain Point 1 and Mountain Point 2 tax credits, and then also have about 300,000 square feet of commercial space, and I think that's one of the areas where we think there's significant opportunity here in the city because of some of the potential opportunities that exist. And not to steal anybody's thunder, I'm not sure what else is gonna say, but I think there's a lot of opportunity right now, given some of the federal funding that has been allocated for opportunity zones. I think there's an awful lot of property here that maybe can be designated, maybe under some mechanism, financial, under an opportunity fund. I think there's a, we can probably aspire to do a lot with the city, we would need the city's participation, of course, but I'll stop there, because I think this, as a whiteboard session, I think there's an awful lot that we can do in terms of some communication back and forth, and sharing some ideas. So, some of the folks in my team are here, and I invite them to come up and introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Nick Smith, I'm the Vice President of Real Estate Development, under Real Estate Operations at Amon. I oversee our real estate development, new construction, acquisitions, rehab, here in Arizona, as well as our divisions in Nevada and New Mexico, and then obviously our big self-help shoplight program that we run here, the whole portion of the state.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jim Brooks, I'm the Project Manager for Chigano Por la Casa, but also for La Casa Construction, our for-profit construction arm. So I do work down here in Nogales, we're building housing right now, and some in Tucson, but certainly, I agree with what Herman said, is that, you know, commercial looks to be something we could do, and certainly some multifamily, there's so many opportunities we can go forward to join in on.
Hello, my name is Corinna Fraboso, I'm the Rural Development Director here in the Nogales office of Chigano Por la Casa. We have actually been working with the self-help program here in Nogales since 1995. We built about 278 homes. Those homes are to target low-income families. We started the shoplight program about two years ago to target also moderate-income families, and we're looking to expand with the help of the city to start targeting additional brackets of income, or continue targeting low-income families here in Nogales.
Hi, Mayor, thank you, the council members, thank you so much, Mayor. I'm Emilio Gainer, I represent Business Enterprises Division of Chigano Por la Casa, I'm here representing John Ramirez, the Executive Vice President. Business Enterprises oversees all of the business lending section, which you mentioned, Mayor, the vestamos section, equity investments, business development, and supports all of the different areas of Chigano Por la Casa as it relates to what we've talked about here as investment, empowerment, and economic self-sustainability, and it's a pleasure to be here, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'd just like to recognize an independent consultant that worked with us many times, that's Sir Fardisco, who worked with us. So, our offices here in Nogales are located at 575 North Grant Avenue, as we've been there, we were actually further down the road on Grant for many, many years, but I think about eight years ago, we moved into the new offices there. Our Mountain Point project that was, that Mon mentioned, is at 800 East Baffert, that's that nice apartment complex you have there by the school, as you go up the street there. And again, the self-help program that's been going on. So, Chigano Por la Casa is about to celebrate its 50th year of existence, and we're gonna invite you all to the big party we're gonna have in April of 2019, so we're excited about that. But with our board and the new leadership team and the new members, we changed our vision and dis-simplified it. Our new vision is on the screen here, it's empowered lives, that's what we do, and we do it in four different areas, because we say in our mission statement, we drive economic and now political empowerment, and I'll talk a little bit about that. The four areas are the four pillars, we like to call them our economic development, education, healthcare, and housing, which includes other real estate that we wanna talk about potentially as in partnership hearing, I've had some meetings with City Manager about potentially some ideals that we had earlier. But our strategy as a nonprofit has been that we try to be as self-sufficient as possible. So we have an operating budget, give or take, of about $100 million, give or take, overall. Of that budget, we generate about 55% of that through, we have seven for-profit subsidiaries, we have fee-for-service programs that we run the contract, and our goal over the next, now five years, under our seven-year plan, is to move that percentage from 55% self-generated to 77% self-generated. So as we partner with folks, and we have these whiteboard sessions, so when somebody finally gets to the point, working with us, and say, well, David, how can, how can we help the community, how can we work together, we go to these whiteboard sessions, which is not as formal as this, but we'll work through it, and we try to figure out, what are the goals and objectives of the partner that we're talking to, and what are our strengths? What do we bring to the table? And we get those circles where they overlap, and we kind of, in a fun way, say, we try to find the pony, where's the pony in there, on the strategies that we're trying to do? And once we find that, we try to make it where it's a sustainable solution to what we're trying to solve. I'll give you an example of a for-profit company that we worked with, United Healthcare, largest healthcare company in the country. We sat down with them, and as we had our whiteboard session with them, some of their goals and objectives were, how do we lower healthcare costs? And how do we better serve our communities? So when we finally had the chance to make our pitch, when they flew us out to Minnesota, we came up with an idea of these four pillars that I talked about, housing, education, all these things. And we cross-sectored those things, so we cross-sectored housing and healthcare, because we knew, based on all the work that we've been doing over the 50 years, that we know as a social determinant, housing is a key element on healthy outcomes for a family. If you don't have a safe place, quality place to call home, tough to have a good education, tough to have good healthcare, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So fast forward, what we came up with is they made a $22 million investment in Chigano Por la Casa. And I say investment, because we're, we try to find a ways that our partner wins, we win, and most importantly, our community wins, wherever we're working at. And it was $22 million, what we did with it was we bought two large apartment complexes near a clinic, healthcare clinic, that we co-branded with United Healthcare. With those dollars in Phoenix, we were able to buy 500 units between the two apartment complexes. And the idea was that we were gonna set aside 20% of the units for any patient referral that United Healthcare would send to us. So somebody would go into the emergency room, and after they talked to the social worker, and they figured out, well, these folks don't have a, if you don't have a home, if you have any chronic disease such as diabetes, you don't have a place to put your insulin or any other types of medicine that you may have that need refrigeration, for example. And so, we basically said, we're gonna take the return on investment on a typical real estate deal, and we're gonna add variables to it. And we were gonna monetize the cost savings and everything else that we did. So at the end of the day, they're making a 20% return on investment, and I'll show you why. One of the first families that we moved into the apartment complex as a referral from them was a Navajo Nation family, living on the nation, couldn't afford to live anywhere else, unfortunately have very sick daughter, young family. United Healthcare was spending $300,000 a year on this particular family, and as we studied, a lot of healthcare-related costs are non-medicine and treatment-related, there are other things, transportation, other things. So they were spending money on helicopter rides, more often than not, from the nation to the Phoenix Children's Hospital and other things. And they couldn't provide home care because they lived on the nation, quality home care. So now they live in a apartment unit that we bought with their money, about a 10-minute ride from the hospital. Their saving of that $300,000 a year, they're saving two-thirds of that, so now they're saving $200,000. So just with that one family, that's the kind of cost-saving, the kind of solutions, innovative solutions. So I tell you that story just to tell you that we're... So I tell you that story just to tell you that we've come a long way as far as how do we work with partners, how do we come up with quality solutions, no matter what it is, we try to figure out, how do we engage the private sector, how do we engage the public sector? And my team's going to talk about some others, but I think before we go forward, I think we had a couple of videos that we wanted to share? Do we have those teed up? Okay. So we're going to show you a couple of videos, and then have some other staff come up, and at any time you can ask any questions, of course.
Thank you, David.
This is a United Healthcare clinic that we co-branded.
This is a moment in history that unleashes the possibilities for a better quality of life for many families around the Maryvale area in Phoenix, Arizona. My community connect is today a reality.
I'm very excited today, we hope that it will bring, bring all the resources to our community. We really could work on a big family, a high family, together to make a impact on the community. That's why I did this, that's why I was here.
This new model of community collaboration within private and public centers has many celebrating because of the potential to change not only lives, but generations.
Having, like, I was, because the country is, you know, probably a higher density, less environmental, area. It definitely changes people's life, which is, you know, it's the graduation, it's the, you know, college, and, you know, helping. It's the way everybody imagines right now.
For Austin Smith, President of CEO of United and State of United Healthcare, the positive results are easy to predict and setting only the beginning of the efforts that will multiply nationwide.
We all want to expect very different things to expect from communities, and the thing that will make a big difference is we'll be able to do a lot, to prove that this kind of collaboration, this kind of public-private partnership really does work in a better healthcare outcome, which is either economic outcomes, or individuals, and the community, and the sort.
It is important to highlight that the results of this pilot program will be analyzed by Arizona State University in Georgia, Kent.
The collaboration is very inspiring, and that's a part of our, of our, of our, of our mission, and you can't just pick a person that is, as I say, important, and not have a listening, good care for that person.
Clients of my community today by VON are very excited and grateful to have so many services under one group. From Doug's opportunities with St. Joseph's, the worker, to resources to feed their families, St. Louis School of Bank, in US for success for bearing them to a good for the interview, of work.
I love that it's helped the community, right, it's, it's a lot of opportunities with job services and, 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 and just a lot of that that, yeah, our community needs. It's exciting, having been part of those conversations from the very beginning as a board member, to now see it come to fruition as to the types of services we're going to offer, it was very unique, one of the kind of opportunities where I think it's a holistic approach to healthcare, holistic approach to affordable living, and it all makes sense. Where we try to provide all the services needed to, 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 to.
United Healthcare has given $20 million to Chicanos por la Causa that will be used to provide housing to dozens of families in the Maryvale area.
This is a historic moment in the area. Now we're getting in poverty, we're getting into the most difficult, we're getting in, 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 in change, but I provided services. They were fortifying across a fragmented social system in order to get at the real reason that healthcare wasn't doing that. And so, it's hard to get someone to focus on that health if they don't have a safe place, if they don't have access to food.
My community connect, empowering communities.
The next video we're going to take a look at is that of our lending program, Prestamos.
We began to build a house that was starting, it's been a process, it's been a process. My family, who's already found, who just, we are married and we're going to hire, I learned my parents' value of my work, and all of our dreams. The children, the family, the personal, I opened my own new knowledge. I teach my students how to provide health, and health, and, and, early on, we'll be able to, and, 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 the change. Join the force, I see, we are, we are.
So as you can see from those examples, that's how we empower lives in the four pillars. The fun thing about Alvia there at the end, she'd gone to many banks, and nobody would give her a chance, right? She was abroad with her parents when they came, when she was very young. She'd gone to Community College, but then with our current environment that we have in the state, the cost was going to be too much, so she dropped out and then started to work at Pet Boys for a while, being a cashier, got bored with that, so somebody said, "Well, why don't you go get your beautician's license?" She did, and went to work for somebody, and she got bored with that, and said, "Well, why don't you open up your own salon?" And then when she opened up her salon, she was having trouble finding quality hairdressers that she felt good about. And then they said, "Well, buy beauty college", so she found one, that's when the banks wouldn't take that next step with her. But, you know, she didn't have a lot of collateral and things that a typical bank that would look at, but we saw the value in her. We saw the experience she had, the commitment she had, and we wanted to give her a chance. So we made her a loan, I believe that loan was about $250,000, if I remember right, Emilio. It's about a $250,000 loan for she could buy an existing beauty college, and now she's opened up other locations, she's trained over 500 students to get their beautician's license, so the ripple effect of the investment we made in somebody to empower her life, and now she's empowering other people's lives by getting those types of training. And then, as I mentioned, as I described the United Healthcare video, the next step, actually yesterday we celebrated because now we partnered with a group called Native Health, which is a federally-qualified health center, federally designation for primary care clinics. They are now under that same roof now, as a partner with us, and we celebrated that yesterday. And the Director of Health and Human Services, I should say, Indian Health and Human Services, the National Director, came out to help us open up that facility to provide healthcare. So I'm going to open it up with our members, Valerie, you're going to set it up on, and we're going to try to be as succinct as possible to be respectful of your all-time, but just to throw out some initial concepts of, and I'm going to start with I'm going to start with real estate, because I know that's some of the big discussions, so, and Edman, I'm going to ask you and your team to come up and kind of tee up what you've been looking at as potential opportunities here. Same, Valerie, you had something else to set up.
So as Edman and team comes up, I just wanted to talk a little bit about today's goals and objectives, very simple. We, our goal today is really to introduce and connect and reconnect with Chicanos por la Causa and the city of Nogales, share information, hope to make this somewhat of an informal conversation and dialogue, so we can share and learn of your community needs, in hopes that we can establish a foundation in which we can have a working relationship, and establish a foundation for a solid partnership. If, again, if that is what your community needs, we believe we have the resources and wherewithal to be able to help you meet those needs of your community. Thank you. With that, Edman, I'm going to ask, I know on the agenda, we're a little behind here, so I'm going to ask everyone to just shorten their their presentation a bit, so we can have some time for dialogue.
And I actually came just with a kind of an open, an open mind, right, because I think it wasn't, it was really more of a whiteboarding session that I see. And we do have a couple of suggestions of some land that we've owned for a while, that I thought Jim, who's worked for us for a while, has put together along with Nick. And, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you recall, but we met a couple of years ago, and we actually had a good conversation about our Baffert land. So I have a few things that I do want to talk about, but we purchased this particular land, which is very close to the other multifamily that we own, with our NSP program, which I won't talk about, because we can talk for hours about what our stabilization program. This is one particular property that we landbaked, and we now have to do something with it. So the federal government, basically requesting that we do something, we want to close our grant. This is a concept, it's been, it's been a tricky one, because it's very, oh, did you need an extra copy?
No, no, we're fine.
Okay. So it's been a tricky one because of the landscape, right, but we thought, you know, it took a while to figure out what was in our best interest, and at one point, to be brutally straightforward with you, we thought maybe a swap with the city would be in our best interest. Maybe we could, because the city, I think, does have the need for access through it. So there was several ideas that were coming to us. I will tell you that very, very recently, I mentioned this kind of in my opening remarks, with the, with the, if you want to call it the advent now, or this idea of opportunity zones, this land happens to be in a qualifying opportunity zone, which, it changes my whole perspective on the opportunity here. And again, we're all learning about what that really means, but what that does look like it means is that we can entice investment that would come in, because there's a tax incentive for investors to do so. How we might be able to, you know, work together with the city, I think is really what's interesting to me, is really getting together. And if it's something like this, this now becomes a very viable concept, because I think monies can be attracted to invest. The return on investment to an investor now, I mean, you can actually start to monetize it because of the tax credits involved. I just think it's a wonderful opportunity now that really becomes a reality, okay? And I think Jim and Nick had done a wonderful job in terms of preparing documents, so that was just one of the ideas that I thought was very timely at this point. I'll just switch, change gears unless you have a specific question about this one, right? But I also, I also believe that part of what we talked about a couple of years ago, Mr. Mayor, was the fact that affordable housing was in such high demand. I think more so than now, it's even more so, I mean, the real estate market is actually, in a way, boomed in the last two years. Unfortunately, people of low resources are the ones that are left behind, right? So here we are again, in a situation where not only are they left behind, but housing prices are going up, and how do we attain homeownership for them? Corina's done a wonderful job in running our self-help program, and what's interesting about the self-help program is, you know, families get together under a mutual program that really allows them to keep costs down. What we were finding two years ago is a lot of families were coming to us saying, "Hey, we don't want to wait." It's nine months really to try and get families together to make a property work, and it works, right? But it takes a long time, and for the most part, people aren't willing to wait nine months, because they're priced out of the market again, right? For one thing. So we did create a program after we talked a couple, two, three years ago, that's been very successful, but here we are again. I think that what we're finding is that there has to be some additional funds that come in to assist folks. And what that is, I think that what I would suggest is that we consider how we could generate dollars in some other program, and maybe move some dollars over to help subsidize some of those folks, because there's a huge demand for housing. And Corina, I don't know if you have anything specific on the self-help program, but we intend to continue to move it forward. We've had additional grant funding for it. I just think that we probably need to consider how we can work together to address that demand. You know, we can continue to come in and build them, because we do build those houses ourselves now, under a different program, but we're probably shy, I would say, 10% of the total development cost to really make it work and continue it, perpetuate it. But the demand is there, and two, three years ago, I think we talked about the ability to maybe work with home funding that would come in from the federal government to assist you. So, I'm sorry, was there a question?
Yeah.
Is there a possibility where we can use CDBG funds to work with you to offset some of the infrastructure costs, that kind of stuff?
Absolutely, so that's where I referenced the home funding, it's really probably the home funding, which is kind of the same bucket that comes from, but, but home would definitely be something, CDBG, I'm not sure if you could use it for residential housing like that, but the answer to your question is, you likely have the opportunity to move dollars from home to make that happen. What we find is the economic impact of even a house is very, very significant, right? Especially when you consider the impact that family has to the local economy. So even if it's a $10,000 home investment for down payment assistance, you really recoup back in terms of economic impact.
And at least with CDBG funds, I mean, they're funneled through our COG, and I don't know if the other funding would go through the COG, or if we'd have to make direct application for those.
CDBG, no, but yes.
So I think the idea of affordable housing, we're learning a lot, I think Rio Rico in Nogales is a beautiful example to the entire country on what can happen with self-help. And this new model that we frankly created, I mean, you can't find self-help, like, if you Google it, we kind of created the concept because of the demand that we saw from neighbors wanting, you know, hey, we want, we want housing now, right? So we basically did it under our construction company. But again, what we're finding is, folks are willing to pay a little more and whatnot, right? But they're still shy, maybe 10%, 15% of the total development cost. And Jim, Jim, I was going to ask you, what is the approximate total development cost of a home under our self-help light program? I don't know if you could go stand up, please?
It's about $150,000 right now, so.
Which is still very impactful, huh? If you can build a $150,000 home, I can do that across the country, which is why folks are interested, right? But the folks that are wanting to buy, most can only afford, say, $135,000, right? So how do you come up with that $15,000? We used to be able to do it under an NSP model, these other types of models, but, you know, that money is gone, right? So how do you do that? And again, the economic impact is a good, is a good reason why you do it, because you do recoup the 15, but how do you get the 15? I'm not just throwing 15 out as a, because it's 10% of 150, but the demand is huge in Nogales and in Rio Rico, which is here in our backyard, right? So, but again, the self-help program, the Baffert land from an economic development and just a development standpoint because of opportunity zones, and then I know that we've also looked at development just in your, in the inner city, because I think there's an awful lot of opportunity for commercial development, and again, that qualifies for opportunity zone funding as well. I'll stop there, because I can keep going, but going back to the presentation or the discussion David had on the United Healthcare, the reason that really works is the model that we implemented is an 80/20 model that works with any partner. So 80/20 is really us coming to the table saying, we don't need tax, we don't tend to come to the table requesting tax credits, and actually, tax credits really put a hamper on your development also, right? Because there's a lot of strings attached to what you have to do. An 80/20 model simply says 80% of the units are market rate and can be market rate, and provide the revenue to help subsidize 20%. So any mixed income model, which is really what we're all about, we're really not about perpetuating poverty. We don't want to put 100% affordable housing anywhere, but if you can do market rate housing, generate a low profit, again, we're a nonprofit developer, we don't need a 20% return, we just need a return on the 80%. You can use that to help subsidize maybe a self-help program, right? So it's that 80/20 model, I think, that we're finding tremendous success on.
Is there any of these homes, I don't know if you do, but we lose a lot of federal law enforcement officers out of this community because of housing, is there anything in this program that has something for them?
I would say absolutely, I would say that when you look at the affordable housing programs that we've actually done, you know, with the NSP program, it actually mandates that you make, you know, certain earmarks, right? So you can, you can absolutely say, hey, so, you know, the law enforcement or veterans, or, you know, that's typically what can have a first right of refusal on contracts, right? Or lenders typically come in and offer programs that make it much more palatable for that population to buy. So, and then I will also say that there's an awful lot of grant monies that we do receive, Home Depot is a good example. We got money from Home Depot just specifically to assist veterans. So if there's, if there's a place where we think we can create something, where maybe law enforcement can be 20% of that complex, if you will, I think that we can actually, that's what CBLC is really good at doing, we go out and find grant monies that can make it happen. But it's usually in conjunction with the municipality that really, you know, has that, has that requirement too, right? And then the picture, it's a really good picture, you tell it to your funders. But absolutely, I mean, I think that that's absolutely what you want to do.
Any other questions or comments to the panel?
And I guess this, I'll leave this design, because we think there's a design there, that we could probably work, you know, maybe have a closer group discussion on what that could look like, because I need to do something with that land. Just because I need to get it, not that I need to get it off our books, but I need to close out our grant, so I need to go back into HUD, what I'm doing with that, and I can simply convey it to the city, but David's not going to let me do that for nothing, so. Maybe, maybe some coffee or something.
We're traded.
Coffee?
We're traded for coffee.
Thank you, Edman. Next up is going to be Emilio Gaynor, he's our Director of International Development. He can tell you a little bit about the scope of his work and our Business Enterprise Division, and then we'll go into an open dialogue Q&amp;A session. Thank you.
Thank you again for allowing me to address you, and it is really a pleasure. Nogales, I've worked at, as representative for the state of Arizona in Hermosillo many years ago, for a couple of governors, and I always loved coming here because it's the real bi-national world. It's, people know each other, they're growing up with each other, families have been, this, they've had this relationship for way longer than some of the other parts of the state that think they're reinventing that bi-national relationship. So it's really a pleasure to be here. Our, our division is a division that
Our division is a division that manages, well, oversees the prestamos area. And one of the things that we've been trying to do is we've been trying to connect with companies that have an eye to the US, that want to come to the US, but know they're going to have some issues with financing because they don't have any credit history or any experience in the United States. I'll give you an example of a recent company that we helped that came to Phoenix. They were working with the City of Phoenix, and the City of Phoenix couldn't find a way to provide an opportunity for financing or investment. And after they met with a couple of bankers, ultimately, the city, a friend of the city recommended that they talk to us. We looked at the situation, did some due diligence, went to Mexico, look and make sure that they're actually an existing company, make sure that they're actually fabricated, the products that we're fabricating. And ultimately, based on several items that we look at when we look at a loan, we decided that we could do this, we could make this loan because the risk was worth the reward. And we ended up, in fact, making our biggest loan ever. We made a $1 million commitment to this company so they can manufacture plastic wrap in Phoenix. This company decided on Phoenix because of the competitiveness in Phoenix, the transportation and other factors provided them with a situation where they could manufacture and sell their product in Phoenix at a very competitive rate compared to expanding in Mexico City. But if it wasn't for the, for prestamos being able to provide a loan to them, they would not have expanded into the United States. What I'm here to talk to you about today is how we can do that in Nogales. We met with, and there's many other areas that I can talk to you about, but I think specifically this is an opportunity we can talk about right now. About two months ago, the Arizona-Mexico Commission Philanthropic Committee, the Community and Social Organization Committee, had some meetings here in Nogales on the Mexican side and on the US side. And one of the meetings happened at Nikki Kiriyaki's home in Nogales Sonora. What the Sonorans did is they invited the business people on the Sonora side that do business in the US to talk to them about how they can expand their business into Arizona, but how they can do that in being socially responsible at the same time. So the discussion was really about how these companies can be socially responsible, but the discussion graduated into, hey, I'm investing in the US, and I'm investing with partners or whatever, but I've never invested with a nonprofit organization. And what Herman just talked about a few minutes ago was that what CPLC provides as a partner to the City of Nogales is that nonprofit benefit, that benefit where we don't have to exercise some of the tax benefits that a private company might demand or need. We can pass that on, in some cases, to these investors and developers that come from outside of the United States and invest in Arizona. I want to open that up and kind of entice you into discussion because I can't go completely into detail, but I can tell you that when an investor comes from Mexico, unless they have a really good partner that knows how to, you know, navigate the tax code and work with organizations that can help them benefit from opportunity zones and other things like that, then they just come in and invest. Why? Because they like to invest in the US, they protect their peso in dollars, they get a good return regardless of what happens with the peso, they are protected because their investment is in dollars. But when you show them that those improved returns, when you take into consideration some of the benefits that could be acquired through a nonprofit, then it really becomes something that they desire. And I would like to offer CPLC as a partner to Nogales to make this happen here in this region. Many times when you look at the, what is it, the city of, the state of Maricopa, right? Something like that we call it down here. People look to that world out there because they think that's the best place to invest. And in many cases, here, right here in Nogales, you have Fresh Produce Association of Americas, you have fresh produce transiting through this border at record rates. Yes, some of it diminished, but I think we were improving in Nogales, some of the improvements that the federal government has made here as it relates to that border crossing. You know, those things are opportunities, and if you package it right, you can package it to these investors and entice that foreign investment directly into this area. And that's one of the things I'm here to offer. The other thing that, and there are many other things, but one other thing that our division manages, Business Enterprise manages, is the area that, where we seek federal grants that provide us the opportunity to invest in companies that create jobs. And I don't remember the last time we invested in a Nogales company, but we have invested in Tucson. So I'd like to see how we can better work with Nogales so that when we go after these grants, we can include a Nogales company that has some future plans for hiring people or needs that little bit of capital to be successful and to hire people. So anyway, those are the two things I wanted to share with you. I know that we're a little bit short on time, and I'm sure David's going to want to jump in.
We have one question here from the Councilman.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead. Mr. Lucero.
Maybe two from the other.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that, you know, the state of Maricopa, and I guess for us in Nogales, Tucson is not representative of Nogales, and even though Tucson thinks that they are the port of entry to Arizona, they are not.
And I didn't mean to say that, Councilman.
No, and I bring it up only because I look at your board representation, your committee representation. There's very little, if no rural representation on any of your boards or committees, and that's what I would point out. If you're looking for partnerships, you need to find ways to include rural Arizona onto some of your boards and committees. There's very talented people in the outline area. I know Dr. Varona has plenty of free time, volunteer to serve on any of the committees.
So I'm sure that David will address that because we do have some committees, but you're right, we do need to be better at that. And, you know, I think another thing I want to mention is that we're lucky, very lucky, to have enticed Valerie to come to join us because she really does know Southern Arizona. She knows Nogales and southeastern Arizona. And I think this is the opportunity type for us. I don't want this to pass by again when we have somebody of this caliber and this talent with us, helping us navigate through this process. So thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir.
You're right about that. She brings a wealth of knowledge and experience from the Casino de Sol, and Casino de Sol has had a good relationship with various factors and nonprofits within our area here. But it would be nice if, when you make this application or so, that you spend some time because that's one of the themes of this consult and our strategic plan.
You have to turn on the mic.
Was to go ahead and enhance economic development, and as you're aware of, we don't have a property that's, we rely on sales tax. So we want to increase our economic development. We've tried some strategies with Santa Cruz County, and it starts, and then it breaks down. And I think that we're starting off on a nice platform here where we could do some. And maybe the mayor, you could continue the dialogue with Dr. Felix on this because I think this is an opportune time where we can help some of our local businesses to create jobs and market that idea to other people because unfortunately, a lot of the retail people kind of live in their own little world, and it's them and the banks. And the banks say no, and then they don't know what to do. They don't know that grants are available, or they don't even understand the bureaucracy of the Small Business Administration. So I think this is a good step, and, you know, I really think Valerie understands the working environment here. But there's a lot of people here that want to expand, so it's really, even though they have that entrepreneur spirit, they don't know how to go out and expand.
I think you're Dr. Varona, volunteering.
No.
That's what I heard.
No, you heard him correctly.
I appreciate those comments, and Councilman Lucero, you know, that's exactly why we're here, right? And on the first day that Valerie did, we met with Dr. Felix and tried to schedule this meeting as soon as possible. So we are committed, and it's going to take more dialogue, more sit-down with staff and others because opportunities, because our platform is Opportunity Zone Fund, you know, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but it's basically a capital gains tax shelter, right? And we are a US Treasury community development financial institution, so we can self-certify and do that right away. So we can look to, if you have an economic council or whatever the structure is here, we could even co-label a fund, Nogales, whatever, CPLC Opportunity Fund, and we'll attract capital gains investors to whatever the plans are here. So we want to know bigger plans. I saw one that was mentioned earlier, right? So we want to be able to look at these as we start to recruit these companies that come to this area, that we bring our full platform. So we talked about opportunity funds, it's a new one, but we're new market tax credits, right? We're 501(c)(3) bonds that we could do. There's all kinds of other tools. We've worked out to figure out how to, when we partner with cities, that they have land that they want to put in a deal on a fair exchange so that we don't get the conservative institutes coming in and attacking us saying, you know, the cities are giving away land. So we've figured all those types of things out, and I'll stop there because I see some ads.
I guess there's a question, I don't know who's, I guess Vice Mayor, you've been waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I think I would direct this question to Emilio. Is he here?
Yeah.
Emilio, you're talking about enticing, what type of investors? You did mention investors and a gathering of business people across the border, but what type of businesses, what type of investing are you talking about?
Well, in my conversations with, and I can tell you this because I actually talked to them about sharing this information, we met with people you probably recognize with Nikki, with Nick Kiriyakis. They have cross-border investments and they work in the US. They had no idea that they could ever get a tax benefit. And they do significant investments, not only here but in other places. Another person that was in the meeting was a person by the name of Ricardo Mason, who is the owner of many businesses in Sonora and throughout Mexico, but he also invests heavily in Arizona and in California. And when I chatted with him at the same event about potential tax benefits, he was very interested. So the size of the investment is really up to us. So I'm asking you to look at us as part of your toolbox, okay? Nogales needs someone that can provide financial support, loans to companies that might not be able to get it from the bank. They're right on the edge with a bank where the bank is saying, well, you know, you have collateral, your credit history is a little shady, you know, or not strong enough. Those are the ones that we want to see. Those are the ones that we want. We get the referral from the banker, but how can we do that with Nogales?
So you make the connection.
The connection. Also, go and present these opportunities to these investors. So if you have something like the Amathyre or one of our projects, how can we do, how can we go discuss this with them together? Because we can go talk to them, we have a good relationship, et cetera, but if they see the city also accompanying us in this presentation, they're going to say, okay, they have the city's support, the permits aren't going to be an issue, they're going to treat us fairly and respectfully, I want to invest there. That's what I'm looking at. Councilman Lucero?
Thank you. Again, just to pick up on some of the things that you're talking about, Mike Vazquez, who's our financial advisor, he should be here talking to us about the opportunities that exist within your organization. So there's opportunities that are there, we just need to take advantage of, looking at other folks that you have on your board. Larry Lucero, who's with TEP, he's always down here talking to us. Ned Norris, former Chair of the Toronto Autumn, we've had relationships with the Toronto Autumn. It'd be nice to have him down here. We'd like to partner with the troubled community and do things like that because there's opportunities abound, so we just, we need to pick up the dialogue and take advantage of the partnerships that already exist.
Absolutely. And yes, those are great board members for us and the different committees you could see in the booklet, and that's what we want to do. We made, personally, I'll talk about myself as a new CEO, we made the commitment that we wanted to do more in Southern Arizona, not just Tucson, right? I understand that piece. And being from Phoenix, Tucson also, not just Phoenix. So all politics are local. But I am committed to this, and the organization is there, you know, the investment in bringing Valerie on board and having her. So we will bring in those, because we don't do anything without partnership. Everything you see in that, those 300,000, 4,000 people, there's no way we could do that without partners. So that's what we're going to bring to the table. We're going to be the ones setting it up. And there's other, we've been very good at attracting federal dollars, and I think we can do that in partnership and the state for that matter to work here in Nogales.
Well, I guess we have one more, another, I was wondering, Councilman Lucero would like to ask.
Yeah. Basically, what about nonprofit organizations? What kind of partnerships you do with that? You know, I'm big in sports, we need a lot of complex development. Every year we have more kids playing baseball, soccer, and stuff like that. You know, I'm a part of the Little League, been in it for 15 years, and we have a West Regional Tournament over here. You know, we've been teams from Alaska, Hawaii, Washington, Oregon, and basically, we just finished our regional tournament last Thursday. But do you do anything with, in conjunction with nonprofit organizations, just like Nogales Little League, for instance?
We'd be open to looking at something like that. You know, typically, we're doing economic development, real estate, and providing our own social services that we do, but would be open to discussing those type of opportunities or, you know, more simplified, you know, to support it in some way. But we prefer to look at something that, you know, what's more of a long-term type of...
But in the city, I know we have the backing for the kids and stuff like that, so if we could get it through, you know, make a change between the city, Little League, and Chicano, Pollo Causa.
Yeah, even if we don't do as much directly, because, you know, we are a nonprofit ourselves, we can broker stuff. Like, we, one of the things that Emilio did recently with our Arizona-Mexico Commission Committee, you know, we recently brought over some children from Hermosillo, worked with the Diamondbacks to get them to provide some support. So we have other friends, you see the list of the companies that we work with? We're willing to reach out to them and get them to get more involved and say, you know, will you help us help other markets? So directly, yes, and also indirectly and helping bring those other partners that we work with. Because again, we like to think in abundance, and I just think that, you know, the partners that we work is, we're the only ones that they want to help, and so we can bring those types of support mechanisms as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
One thing I kind of want to mention, and I think Dr. Felix is probably the right person to continue to set up the stage for this because last year we signed an international or bi-national actually agreement in economic development with Nogales Sonora, and some of those, and we're reaching out to those investors, and we have, they have a panel over there, we have a board here. And so Dr. Felix is kind of familiar, he's kind of helping organize that. And we have it set in place. As a matter of fact, we have like the Chamber also involved with it, and we have different businessmen here locally that are involved here from the produce industry, you know, Mr. Lucero's helped us a little bit represent the mining industry, and we're bringing all the different industries together so that we can collaborate with and partner up with investors from both sides of the board and working together in this area. And so I think if you could have a representative showing, you know, our board, that would really help, maybe we could even come up with more ideas, and I guess I'll put that in your hands because you're still kind of spearheading that, and you have a lot of influence on that. So maybe we can set that up and maybe your local representative can become a member with us, and that way you can all work together with us in that sense. And I think that sounds like a good idea there, Dr. Felix.
Absolutely. That's the next step for that. Absolutely, that's the next step for that. A lot of the, of the trouble is trouble. Initially, that's all. I appreciate that, and is any other committee that you think it would be good for us to sit on? You know, I can voluntold a few people to, to, to serve on, serve on those committees if you're offering the opportunity to be appointed to, to any of those positions. And the international thing I'll say, and Emilio had something he wanted to add as well. So again, to put it in more simple terms, we, we tell people to work with us, it's a matter of whether you like what we do and you want to work with us. You know, if you have grant money, great, but if you need a return on your investment, we have a menu, right? And what I'd like to do at Nogales in the future, so our next new market tax credit application, right, could we, we get, we got 30 million the last time that we applied, we just applied again, I'd love to be able to work to identify projects so that we can include that, because quite frankly, you, you score better if you include rural communities in the states. So on this committee, I'd love to, you know, sit down and we target, you know, what are your guys' priorities here in the city, economic development projects, include those in, in those applications and other federal grants. We were very, very good of, of finding those little hidden treasures in the federal government, whether it's EDA or, you know, we find workforce money in OCS and, you know, we can do the alphabet soup of all the departments. We have a, a top-notch resource development group that we would love. Once we understand what's, what's your, what's your goals and objectives and your projects that you have in your portfolio, then we can start matching it up and matching the team members on it so that we can go after it both domestically and internationally. Because what, what I tell the people, when, when Emilio and Cesar, Cesar, we go down to Mexico, I basically say, if you've got a U.S. tax burden, you can work with us and I've got a tool for you to work with, based on our menu of, of financial products that we have, that we work with to bring that investment here. Emilio, did you want to add something on that?
As long as I'm not the one that closes, boss, you got to close. Oh, okay, all right. This is, CPLC's here, we're in southern Arizona, we have a significant presence. I understand, Councilman Lucero, that the volunteer presence and that type of thing needs to improve. And I can tell you that when Valerie called me and shared what she was expecting from me in this meeting, she also said, Emilio, I need your commitment to Nogales. And I need you to commit to me that if, you know, these things, you know, surface and these opportunities start to look like it's something that we need to engage in, I need your commitment to make sure that we're doing that. So I can tell you that you have our commitment from, from the Business Enterprises Department, but this is real. Our real estate department has built over 200 homes in this area. We're, we're significant contributors to this area. How can we improve it is what I would like to ask, and hopefully this type of session, working with the city manager and working with you, some of you I know are great friends, like I said, I love Nogales. In fact, I was here three years ago when, and spoke at the signing of the sister cities agreement between Nogales and Nogales. And there I talked about economic development and what can be done. So I've seen some things become reality and CPLC can definitely be a partner in this, in this path, in this journey, and can have a lot of fun at the same time. So again, thank you for the opportunity, thank you for allowing me to speak again and for inviting me.
One more question from...
Well, I don't have a question. It's a comment before you bring closure to Mr. Adami, I just want to make a comment there. I was very intrigued with your, your theme, My Community Connects, and how you describe what you have here. But I would hope that you could get together before you leave today with our city manager, because you just canceled a garbage collection for one of your apartment complexes, if I'm not mistaken, with us. And we would like to continue that partnership, we need that partnership. We've lost some commercial, we can't afford to lose commercial garbage collection accounts, so I hope you would meet with our city manager and go over that. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first off, thank you again for, for your time, and as was mentioned before, whiteboard sessions are usually around a table with a lot of markers and post-its everywhere, and obviously this is maybe not the, the best environment for that, but we certainly, you know, invite this innovative conversation, dialogue to take place that really is aligned with the, and we're cognizant of the strategic plan that you all have been working, working on, working in, working within for a very long time. So we are definitely not here to tell you that we have all the answers, we are asking to share information with you, to ask that you consider us a partner in the future. Going back to the purpose and the initial intent of Chicanos por la Causa was the advocacy piece, and there was a need. That being said, the need still exists in various areas. We've talked about pillars, but also from an advocacy standpoint, outreach, engagement is very important, community engagement. I hear, and, and am very much listening, cognizant of, of your comments, Councilman Maldonado, because I know on a very local level, those needs of community, of children, of athletics, as well as of course, education. Those are, there's so many areas that we can really hone in on, and then of course, prioritize, right? So not creating a whole new different plan, but really how can we help align your plan with perhaps some of the work and the resources that we offer by being a connector? One of the first ways that I'd like to offer is as being new to the position here where I would love to be able to work closer and, and intend to do that, is by way of the Cyclovia event, we'll be here, we'll be engaged, we'll be tabling and whatever we can do to bring our staff to volunteer. I know Corina, again, she's very much involved in community through our self-help program, so we are going to be here more often, you'll be seeing us. In addition to that, I would absolutely welcome the opportunity for board inclusion from the city of Nogales and based on your recommendations collectively, and we will certainly follow up with Dr. Felix. Are there any questions before we close and, and ask him when our next meeting will be?
I'll just have a comment before you go ahead and maybe while you think about the next meeting. But another, another resource that we could tap in, and I think they really would love to, to jump, jump in and help us out, especially if we partner up, is the, there are a couple divisions within the Arizona Commerce Authority, the rural, which we, we're here, and also the international side of it. So they're sponsoring on both of those divisions for some joint effort like ours, and that'd be a good resource to tap into.
Piggybacking on that comment, that is another area and a resource. As David mentioned, we have an excellent resource development team based on your needs and possible funding, we could align ourselves together and really take a look to see how we can best support your efforts in perhaps doing so together. So absolutely. Thank you very much for your time today.
I'd like to thank CPLC and all the individuals that came down, I'd like to maintain contact with you and have our whiteboards in the office and get some projects on the table as soon as possible.
Thank you so much.
Our offices are open to you.
Thank you so much. We really want to thank you, Chicanos por la Causa, for bringing the whole team over and, and really kind of break, kind of cutting forth, you know, pioneering the path here for, you know, setting up something that we can all work together. I think it'll be very fruitful for this rural area of ours, and we thank you for supporting, you know, I know that, that kind of, I think since you were in the, before you were a city manager already, we were kind of working economic development and we had some talks before, last year, and, you know, I'm really glad to see the doctors now. He's our, our city manager, and so a lot, a lot, a lot of the footwork has already been done, so I'm, I'm hoping that we can get up to a running start to this. And I'll, I think like the rest of the councils said, we're going to kind of put it in the doctor's hands and we'll be, we'll be supportive of, of making that joint effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, thank you.
Yes, and I guess we've got, I believe it's a short, a short kind of presentation, I guess you're the one that's going to let us know or kind of introduction to an idea, more than likely by number C, by Mr. Cesar Verdusco on sports promotion?
Well, I was about to say, oh, good presentation. My name is Cesar Verdusco. I'm the Olympic coordinator here for the Mexican Olympic Committee for the U.S. and also represents, oh, sorry about that. Well, my name is Cesar Verdusco, thank you mayor for inviting me to be part of this committee. Thank you council members. And a few, a couple year ago, we happened to be with the mayor in Mexico City, and we exchanged conversation there, how can we attract economic development here to, to the city of Nogales? So when we start talking and getting to know each other, I got an idea, so why we don't, why we don't do some Olympic tournaments right here in the city of Nogales? I'm the coordinator here for the Mexican Olympic Committee and also represent the WBC, the World Boxing Council, he just named me for the state of Arizona, Nevada, and, no Nevada, I'm sorry, state of Arizona, New Mexico and Texas. So connecting the dots, I say, you know what, I, having the experience, games always attract economy development, because there's people that spend money to come here, they go stay in hotels, they go shopping, they eat. So also I noticed in some cases, some people come for a tournament and they, they realize that's an opportunity for the businesses here. So I'm talking with the mayor, I say, I have the solution, you know, why we don't do some tournaments here, international tournaments that will attract and put the city of Nogales in the map, you know, internationally, in the border, especially you have a MOU with the city of Nogales-Sonora. So we can help, we can ask them to help us to promote such events, oh, right there. And, and attract some medalists, Olympic medalists, that they will help to, to bring that, that propaganda to the city of Nogales. And so I prepared a little, how do I say, a presentation there, you know, for you, that I can go in details maybe next time, you know, this goes, I want to show you just a small teaser, a video that will pretty much sell everything, the idea, what I have, and it connects very well with the first presentation, with the park that you have. You just have that amphitheater, we can have cultural events there, Olympics, medalists, and even mariachi or folklore dancing.
You all please settle down, we're having a presentation right now. Please keep it quiet until we start...
That video is going to really sell my concept.
Thank you.
Like I was, Mayor John Doe, I'm the guy who can make it happen, and he knows why, because the president of the Olympic Committee is my father-in-law, so I have a power, a dollarage, and also he's the president of the Pan American Games. So we, I can attract even from all Americans. All right, so I'm going to show you a teaser there, so what I have in mind for the city of Nogales, I hope you enjoy and I you value. One last thing, David Adami forgot that, that he, he signed a MOU with the Olympic Committee, so he has that.
Good, so it's all kind of related.
This just happened a month and a half ago in L.A. So this will give you the picture of what we can do here.
Welcome, everyone. We're, we're almost at the end of a presentation, you might tune in and it's kind of interesting matter for the community, so again, welcome for, I know you're here for the regular meeting, but we're almost done.
Well, to explain this video, there were people coming from different countries to L.A., from Haiti, Mexico, of course, 200 kids. Well, I can email you the, the presentation so you can see the value. So it was a great turnaround, three days, and attract a lot of economic development, money, spending money. Also involves bringing champs, Ivan de Holyfield is already, he said he would like to be part of it, so former champ is going to come here, so that's going to be the magnet to attract this kind of population. I can share the same video, maybe next time we can talk over it, okay?
Okay, it's something that we'd probably be interested, maybe we can get together with the doctor and then, and then do another presentation of, of the finished product on, on how we can promote Nogales with...
We need to do it, I know. It's a great potential here, it's perfect. We partner with Nogales-Sonora, we bring these people here, and we do, this is one of the, of the disciplines that we can do, we can do a lot more, and especially with the project you have in the...
Well, we, we appreciate, we know you have the connections and we'd like to continue to explore that, so we'll be in touch, will you, Mr. Verdusco? Thank you. And thank you for coming over. We'll get together and follow up on it. Thank you so much. I guess we're at the, at the end of our presentation, and so you have a motion to adjourn? Second, all squares, if I have a say in aye? Study session adjourned, thank you. We'll take a five-minute break and go into our regular session. Thank you, thank you, we're almost, we're almost there. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.